Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order Thursday, December 5th, 2022 County Commissioners Meeting. Gary, you take the roll.
Yes, Vice Chair Schrader. First, our staff support today: Clerk to the Board, Tony Maranick; County Council, Stephen Madcor. Chair Smith is only joining the first part of the meeting, so she has asked Vice Chair Schrader to chair the meeting, but Chair Smith is online, so roll call, Chair Smith.
Here.
In the room, Commissioner Savas.
Present.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Vice Chair Schrader.
Here. All right, Gary, let's get us started. What do we have first?
Roll call, please.
Oh, Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Scholl, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. All righty, so Gary, now can you open up the meeting? Board discussion items.
There's an opening line. Would you like me to read it, Vice Chair Schrader?
Could you do that for me? That'd be great.
So this meeting is held in person and virtually. If you've joined us on Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. The Chair and Vice Chair would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Order will be enforced in this business meeting. The Board looks forward to your opinions and your polite participation. Our first item today is a board discussion item under Human Resources. Item 1, Ratification of the 2021-2024 Labor Agreement with AFSMI/SECOM Local 350-7 for represented employees. The agreement value is $16,566,047 for three years. Funding is through state 911 taxes and dispatch agency user fees. No county general funds are involved. Stephen Madcor, County Council, will present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Good morning, Commissioners. You have three ratification agreements in front of you. They all concern AFSMI bargaining units. A ratification is essentially this board formally accepting the terms of the labor agreement. The first one is with SECOM, and then we'll hear a second one on DTD. The third one, you will convene as the West Board, and you'll be presented with ratification for AFSMI West. We have members of our bargaining team here today: Evelyn Minor Lawrence, Cheryl Childress, Adam Collier, who is our outside counsel. They can answer any questions you may have regarding any of these contracts, but these are all labor agreements with three different bargaining units. And the ratification would be this board to vote on it publicly and accepting the terms. All bargaining units have accepted their terms already, so this would be the last move of the transaction.
Thank you, Mr. Madcor. Process question: Do we do each one individually?
Yes, you will.
That's what I thought. Thank you so much. So the first one is the ratification of the 2021-2024 Labor Agreement with AFSMI/SECOM. So Gary, anything else we need to add with that?
Only if the Commissioners have any questions.
Nope. Any questions or comments? And I want to thank the unions, all three groups. I know it's always tough to bargain, but as a union supporter and a union mom, I'm really glad you're there, and I really appreciate everyone's service. And I hope, I know my Commissioners will want to make comments as well. I know, Commissioner Scholl?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to thank AFSMI, the members of the union, for your work, your patience in arriving at a resolution, an agreement on this that's in the best interest of both our employees and the people of Clackamas County. Thanks again for your work.
Any other Commissioners? I know you have questions.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to just acknowledge that what's most important to any organization are the employees that work for that organization. And the success or not is really dependent upon the quality of the workforce, and I'm really been proud of the workforce here at Clackamas County. And I want to let my, I'll say colleagues, our workforce, frankly, that are doing the good work that they do. And bargaining is bargaining. I know it's been a long haul, and I'm glad we got to the point we are today, and I'm glad we're here and closing this out. So, and, you know, I just want to say thank you for all the staff that helped along the way on all the bargaining. And it's a, gives me a lot of gratification to close these out today. So three in a row. I'm ready to make the motion, Chair, whenever you're ready.
All righty, go for it. Then let's, Commissioner Fisher, do you want to wait? Say something?
Yeah, well, I'll just make a comment just on this contract for SECOM. I am ever so aware of the tremendous level of stress that, I mean, if you just imagine, you're, and we've all been through SECOM, so you know how it looks with the computers and everything that's there, and the calls come in, and the intense tensity of what can happen in those moments, all of the adrenaline that can be used, all of the quick thinking, all of the attention, the lives that are saved, the CPR that's administered over the phone, the quick thinking of dispatching to other, to whoever needs to go: ambulance, fire, paramedics, whoever it is that needs to, or law enforcement to address the issue. Tremendous amount of ability, skill, amazing, amazing skill. And I know that this board, over the years I've been a Commissioner, honors our first responders that do the 911 calls and our SECOM folks, and that's something that is a really great thing to do, but I'm so appreciative of their work. And I'm hopeful that in time, the policy, even if it comes from the state level, but will recognize more the, like we do recognize in fire and in police, the stress factor in retirement and other benefits. And I'm hoping that in time, that our policies catch up for our workers in SECOM.
Okay, great. So I will entertain.
Vice Chair Schrader, Chair Smith would like to make a comment.
Oh, Chair Smith, yes, please.
Thank you, Vice Chair Schrader. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I've always said that our workforce is our most valuable and greatest asset, and I will always think that. I am so pleased that we landed on an agreement. I look forward to the future with a very professional association with all of the county employees, not just these particular contractees. I agree with all the comments that have said, and I can't wait to vote to ratify all three of these contracts. And thank you very much for our bargaining team, who I see in the audience right now. I thank our employees for their patience and due diligence as we made our way through a long and protracted negotiation. But I am just very pleased and look forward to the workforce continuing their great work. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Smith. So I think we're at the point where we can entertain a motion.
Great. Chair, I move for ratification of the 2021-2024 Labor Agreement with AFSMI/SECOM Local 350-7.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Commissioner Savas and seconded by Commissioner Scholl. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye.
Vice Chair Schrader?
Aye. The motion is approved. So Gary, what's next?
Thank you. The next board discussion item is also from Human Resources. Item 2, Ratification of the 2021-2024 Labor Agreement with AFSMI/DTD Local 3500 for represented employees. Agreement value is $88,174,607 for three years. Funding is through state and federal funds, fees and fines, other revenue, including some county general funds. Stephen, go ahead.
Thank you again, Gary. Commissioners, this is another ratification. This is for AFSMI/DTD. Both the DTD, AFSMI Group, and West, those bargaining units just ratified their agreement from their terms this, within the course of the last week. SECOM was a bit earlier, but we just got news last night, in fact, that the bargaining units accepted the terms, so it's here before you as soon as possible. And this is the same thing. It's a formal agreement, acceptance of the terms by the board of this particular three-year contract. And it's the same bargaining team, included Dan Johnson was on that one as well, as well as other members, Eric Sarh, who's not here, but good work by them as well.
Okay. So I would just like to, I see Dan in the back. You have great employees, Dan. You're a great person to work with, as one of our directors. And these are the folks that keep our roads clear, build our roads, make sure that our infrastructure is in place, with 1,400 miles of roads in this county, as well as other technical things that they do. They're the folks that you see on the road when they have the signs up as they're doing the work to make sure that we're safe, and they clear all the brush. And I'm just glad that we finally got through this negotiation. Any other comments, Commissioners? And maybe Commissioner, Chair Smith would like to say something? Commissioner Scholl?
Well, again, my comments from before are the same, but I'd like to thank all the employees of the Department of Transportation Development for everything you do for this county. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Martha.
All right. Anything? Yeah, go ahead, Chair.
Yes, again, I just want to thank all the negotiating team and our dedicated employees. Again, this group and all the groups are great, great assets for Clackamas County.
All right. I'm assuming Commissioners don't have any clarifying questions or presenters, so may I have a motion.
I move for ratification of the 2021-2024 Labor Agreement with AFSMI/DTD Local 350-0.
Okay. So it's been moved by Commissioner Scholl. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Savas. Tony, if you can call the roll.
Can you repeat the motion? So Chair, if you'd say who, read the script, please. Who made the motion?
Oh, sorry. It's been moved by Commissioner Scholl and seconded by Commissioner Savas. Any further discussion? No. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye.
Vice Chair Schrader?
Aye. It is approved. Great. One more to go, folks. So Gary, what's next?
Would you please convene now, Chair, as the Water and Environment Services Board?
All right. Let's now convene as the Water and Environment Services Board. Gary?
All right. You're now meeting as a Water and Environment Services Board. This is item 1, Ratification of the 2021-2024 Labor Agreement with AFSMI/Wes Local 350-4 for represented employees. The agreement value is $32,013,055 for three years. Funding is through sewer charges, surface water charges, and system development charges. No county general funds are involved. Stephen, go ahead.
Thank you again, Gary. Commissioners, this is the third ratification vote you will have. This is for AFSMI/Wes. Again, the union agreed, ratified over the course of the last week, so it's in front of you at the earliest opportunity. This again is after a long negotiated process. The West folks are those who operate the Tri-City Sewer Treatment Plant, the Kellogg Plant, as well as surface water issues and things along those lines around the county and around the West organization, which is led by Greg Geist, who is also on the bargaining team with the other folks. And so this is a ratification vote for the board to formally accept this three-year labor agreement.
Fantastic. Do Commissioners have any clarifying questions of the presenters, or anything you'd like to say about West real quick?
Sure, but I'll, Commissioner Scholl go first. He had his light on first.
I love, I'm sorry it was on from before. But again, I'd just like to thank AFSMI for their work on this and helping us come to this agreement. And also, I'd like to thank all the members, all the employees of West. What a great job they do. It's a huge effort. They operate probably one of the biggest industrial infrastructures in the county, I think. It's a huge thing.
Pretty much.
And it's very much appreciated. Again, thank you for all your work and coming to this agreement.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment that of the three contracts, or the three employee groups, I think the West employees are probably the less, the least visible in the sense that the work that they do is really not seen by a lot of folks. And the millions of gallons of sewage and water that is processed through our plant and cleaned to federal standards and put back into our rivers in a very healthy and healthy way is just something you don't see, and there's a lot of work to that, a lot of science to that. And they're just not often seen. As people say, when you flush the toilet, you don't know where it goes. And essentially, there's a lot to that. And as Commissioner Scholl stated, it is a huge industrial asset and a operation that doesn't work without our employees. So I just want to hats off and recognition to that less seen group of employees.
Mr. Fisher, or Chair Smith, would you want to just make a comment?
I'm fine. I agree with all the Commissioners. Thank you very much.
All right, Commissioner Fisher, sorry about that.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, all three of these contracts, you have SECOM, you know, answering the phones in moments of distress. You have DTD, and if anybody recalls the ice storms and all the debris, and the organization of picking up all that debris and getting out there and working on to make things safe in our community. And, oh my gosh, our Tri-Cities facility and the wastewater, I mean, and Commissioner Savas, you're right, they're the most probably unseen, but if they weren't doing their jobs and things didn't work well, boy, would it ever be a disaster of things that we would not ever want to contemplate. So incredibly essential, the workers, it really is what makes things happen in Clackamas County, and truly, truly appreciated.
Yeah, clean water folk, they're one of my best. I just love that department. I love DTD too, though, Dan. Okay. We have two of our directors in the audience today, folks. All right, I need a motion.
Chair, I move for ratification of the 2021-2024 Labor Agreement with AFSMI/Wes Local 350-4.
Okay.
Seconded.
All righty. It has been moved by Commissioner Savas and seconded by Commissioner Scholl. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye.
Vice Chair Schrader?
Aye. The motion is approved. Gary, what's next?
All right. Thank you, everyone. I know Commissioners, while today you're only discussing AFSMI, I know you want to recognize all county represented employees, who also include the Peace Officers Association, Federation of Parole and Probation Officers, and the Employees Association. Everyone does fantastic work here at Clackamas County. I know you would also say that today as well.
Oh, no. Thank you for that.
You want anyone to feel left out?
Yeah, no, well, we won't leave anyone out. I always say, it's really the employers that really make this county run, and if you don't realize that, then you gotta, you better think twice.
Thank you.
It is all of them, and we'll wish you all a Merry Christmas at the end of this meeting, I hope, so.
So I believe Chair Smith needs to leave the meeting now. Chair Smith, any other comments you'd like to make before you depart? Nope, she's muted. Okay. Chair, would you now, Vice Chair, would you now convene as the Housing Authority Board, please?
Yes, I will now adjourn as the Water and Environment Services Board and convene as the Housing Authority Board.
All right. You're now meeting as a Housing Authority of Clackamas County. First joining you on Zoom is Housing Commissioner Ann Leenstra. Ann, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
There you are. Good morning, Ann. Welcome. This is the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Item 1, Approval of a Personal Services Contract with Clackamas Women's Services for Supportive Housing Case Management, Housing Management Placement, and Shelter Services, and an Assignment Addendum, transferring the contract to Clackamas County. Contract value is $3,361,958 for one year and six months. Funding is through Metro Supportive Housing Services Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item 2, Approval of a Personal Services Contract with Impact Northwest Providing Supportive Services for Families and Housing Authority Programs, and an Assignment Addendum, transferring the contract to Clackamas County. Contract value is $270,374 for seven months. Funding is through Metro Supportive Housing Services Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item 3, Approval of a Personal Services Contract with the Father's Heart Street Ministry for Outreach Engagement and Housing Placement and Navigation Services, and Assignment Addendum, transferring the contract to Clackamas County. Contract value is $953,304 for six months. Funding is through Metro Supportive Housing Services Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item 4, Approval of a Construction Contract with Nomarco Incorporated for Roofing Repair or Replacement for 21 Units of Public Housing. Contract value is $215,000 for 120 days from the date of notice to proceed. Funding is through Federal Capital Fund Grant Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item 5, Approval of a Third Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement with Metro for the Affordable Housing Bond Program, allocating $4,164,000 in interest earnings as rapid permanent supportive housing funding for the creation of additional permanent supportive housing units with integrated supportive housing services funding commitments. Funding is through Regional Metro Housing Bond Interest. No county general funds are involved. Madam Vice Chair, that concludes the list.
Okay, thank you. Does any Commissioner wish to remove any items? Seeing none, Ann, I'm hopeful you can give us a motion.
I can give you a motion. I move to approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Seconded.
Sorry, did someone second?
Yep, Commissioner Scholl.
Did Commissioner Scholl seconded? Okay. All right, it has been moved by Commissioner Leenstra and seconded by Commissioner Scholl to move forward with the housing agenda. All righty, it's who we call the poll.
Commissioner Leenstra?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Vice Chair Schrader?
Aye. The motion is approved. Great. So let me now adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. And Gary, what's next?
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Leenstra, for being here today. Next Commissioners, as the Board, you have a presentation, the 2022 Clackamas County Achievements. Dylan Blaylock from Public and Government Affairs will present, and we have a short video to show you as well. Go ahead, Dylan.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Administrator Schmitt. I'm Dylan Blaylock with Public and Government Affairs. Great to see you all in person today. Part of PGA's mission is communicating with our key publics so that our residents and stakeholders build better connection and trust with their local government. To that end, we like to make sure that people are very aware and reminded of the county's many accomplishments each year. Today, I have the pleasure of introducing an annual short video PGA has created, which showcases only some of the many achievements that you and county staff have realized this calendar year, 2022. And I think Tony is going to go ahead and queue it up. All right. Thanks, Tony. PGA will begin distributing the video across its public channels today and this weekend. I'd like to thank PGA's Video Production Coordinator, Garrett Teague, for editing and co-producing the video with me, and I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
I'd just like to say thank you for the video. I'm actually going to be distributing it to NACO, if that's okay with you guys, because I think that, you know, they like it when we send things, not only to my group that I'm going to be chairing, the CEWD, but I think to all the leadership. They really like to showcase the good work that county's doing, and I'm proud that we're such a great county, and I'm proud to be here with my colleagues. Any other comments? Yeah, Commissioner Scholl?
Yeah, thank you, Dylan. That was a very good video. Again, it takes the employees of the county, nonprofits, I saw on one part of the video, some of the work our nonprofits do, and the people of the county all working together to make outstanding county, a great place to live and work, and what ended up to be, what's ending up to be, a very good 2022. Thank you very much.
Okay, anybody else?
Yep. As always, Dylan, great, great work. I know it can be backbreaking at times. He and I know what that means. We both have back challenges. But I appreciate the work and professionalism and the staff that you work with as well, so always appreciate it.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Fantastic. Well, thank you, Dylan. We don't need a motion for this or anything.
No motion.
This is just really good. Okay.
So just one little comment that I wanted to make. I recognize, like, wow, especially when it comes to the Llamas Falls locks. It's like, Commissioner Schrader, Commissioner Savas, how long were you working on that before I got here? About six years ago?
Well, it's like 2003 for me, but nobody's counting.
That was one of my first tasks, going to Washington DC and lobbying at the Corps of Engineers and working that issue. And PGA, through our work with Summit Strategies, through our federal lobbying, have just worked so hard on that. And so many of these successes that we're seeing, it takes so, it takes so long. How long were we working? Paul, I'm looking at you. The expansion and seismic upgrades for I-205, how long have you been working on that? Like, how many years?
Well, when I first got on, that project was not even on the ODOT list, so I was able to influence them to put it on the list, on the constrained list. So then it became a project of 12 years.
12 years, right. And then, of course, Sunrise Corridor was, got Phase 1 done, but Phase 2, getting that, all of that working and working for all of those years to get the, to get the legislature to recognize, okay, we've got to really look at this and we're going to be moving forward with that. And the libraries, oh my gosh. When I got here on the commission six years ago, that was like, woo, libraries! This is like a big deal. And now we're at this place all these years later to really culminate that into some real success. So it's pretty cool to look at 2022 and look at all of the years and through all of the commissions, really, that have had the goal of focusing on the people of Clackamas County and getting things done. And what a wonderful video. And then, of course, our county administrator, Gary Schmidt, who, you know, we just say, this is what we want to see. We have our priorities. These are our goals. And guess who gets to administer all that? Gary gets to oversee it and all the public relations. And of course, Don Crutt before him, and John Mante, and Steve Wheeler, and all the others that have steered this, this growing ship for all this time. So it's really wonderful success and awesome work putting it together. Really well done. Really well done.
Well, thank you all very much, and my best to each of you and your families for a safe and pleasant holiday season.
Thank you, Dylan. Thank you, Dylan.
Okay, next is the Consent Agenda. It's a long one, because this is your last meeting for the year. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Elected officials, item. Elected officials, item one, approval of previous business meeting minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. County Administration, item one, approval of a personal services contract with DLR Group Architecture and Engineering Incorporated to design parking lot F and the North Loop Road of the County Courthouse Project. Contract value is $619,914 for 1.5 years. Funding is through budgeted county general funds. This project is eligible for 50% state reimbursement. Disaster Management, item one, approval of amendment number two, modifying funding, scope of work and duration of the 2020 Urban Area Security Initiative Subrecipient Agreement with the City of Portland. Amendment value is a net decrease of $101,333 and increase of 15 days. Agreement value is decreased to $279,191 for one year and nine months. Funding is through the City of Portland. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of Facility Use Agreement with the West Lynn-Wilsonville School District for Emergency Preparedness and Disaster-Related Use of West Lynn-Wilsonville School District Properties. Agreement has no fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved. Finance, item one, approval of a resolution adopting a supplemental budget and making appropriations for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Fiscal impact is an increase of $2,514,642 in appropriations. Total appropriations are increased to $1,315,230,48. Funding is through state and federal grants, user charges and fees, beginning fund balance, cigarette tax revenue, and county general funds. Item two, approval of a contract with Workforce Software LLC for consulting services to implement time and attendance software and annual software-as-a-service subscription. Contract value is $1.2 million for five years. Funding is through county general funds. Transportation and Development, item one, approval of a board order vacating Laura Avenue, a local access road. Vacation fee is $1,898.63. Funding is through the petitioner, no county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of a board order vacating Manzanita Way, a local access road. Vacation fee is $1,518.91. Funding is through the petitioner, no county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of a quitclaim deed with the City of West Lynn. No fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved. Item four, approval of a work and financial plan with the United States Department of Agriculture for migratory bird mitigation. Total value is $15,000. Funding is through the County Road Fund, no county general funds are involved. Health Housing Human Services, item one, approval of an amendment to a contract Nancy Doty Incorporated for Guardianship Services. Amendment value is $2,500 for one year. Contract value is increased to $5,000 for two years and seven months. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority, no county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of a county-based services revenue agreement with Health Share of Oregon for Behavioral Health Care and Services. Agreement value is $4,184,447 for one year. Funding is through the Oregon Health Plan, no county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of amendment to the Revenue Intergovernmental Agreement with Oregon Health and Science University for the Oregon Care Coordination Program. Amendment value is $74,977 for one year. Agreement value is increased to $399,118 for five years. Funding is through Oregon Health and Science University, no county general funds are involved. Item four, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Washington County and Multnomah County for a Regional Medical Reserve Corps Program Specialist that is shared between Washington, Clackamas, and Multnomah Counties to support administration of the three Medical Reserve Corps units. Clackamas County's portion not to exceed $13,789 for one year. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority, no county general funds are involved. Item five, approval of an amendment to our intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas Fire District Number One for Project Hope. Amendment value is $11,200 for one month. Agreement value is increased to $47,281 for one year. Funding is through the University of Baltimore Combating Opioid Overdose Through Community Level Initiative Grant, no county general funds are involved. Item six, approval of an assignment addendum from the Housing Authority of Clackamas County for a Personal Services Contract with Clackamas Women's Services Providing Supportive Housing Case Management, Housing Navigation and Placement, and Shelter Services. Addendum has no fiscal impact. Contract value remains at $3,361,958.74 for one year and six months. Funding is through Metro Supportive Housing Services Funds, no county general funds are involved. Item seven, approval of an assignment addendum from the Housing Authority of Clackamas County for a Personal Services Contract with Impact Northwest for Supportive Services for Families and Housing Authority Programs. Addendum has no fiscal impact. Contract value remains at $270,374.95 for seven months. Funding is through Metro Supportive Housing Services Funds, no county general funds are involved. Item eight, approval of an assignment addendum from the Housing Authority of Clackamas County for a Personal Services Contract with the Father's Heart Street Ministry for Outreach and Engagement and Housing Navigation and Placement Services. Contract value is $953,304 for six months. Funding is through Metro Supportive Housing Services Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item nine, approval of an amendment increasing funding and extending duration of a contract with Impact Northwest to continue and expand Supportive Housing Navigation and Placement Services to the Housing and Community Development Division. Amendment value is $198,267.55 for seven months. Total contract value is increased to $800,603.93 for 11 months. Funding is through Metro Supportive Housing Services Funds, no county general funds are involved. Item 10, approval of an amendment increasing funding and extending duration of a contract with Northwest Family Services for Supportive Housing Case Management, Housing Navigation and Placement, and Short-Term Rental Assistance Services. Amendment value is $3,961,292 for one year and seven months. Total contract value is increased to $5,350,513 for two years and nine months. Funding is through Metro Supportive Housing Services Funds, no county general funds are Item 11, approval of a board order for purchase of six shuttle buses from Northwest Bus Sales for Last Mile Shuttle Program. Total purchase order value is $752,772. Funding through State Transit Improvement Funds, no county general funds are involved. Item 12, approval of a low-income household water assistance program agreement with City of Milwaukee for reimbursement of water and wastewater services on behalf of low-income households. Agreement value not to exceed the $840,019 allocated to the Low-Income Household Water Assistance Program. Funding is through the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department, no county general funds are involved. Item 13, approval of a revenue agreement with Care Oregon Incorporated for the Clinical and Population Health Quality Strategy Program. Total value is up to $162,000 for two years and two months. Funding is through Care Oregon Incorporated, no county general funds are involved. Item 14, approval of a personal services contract Pinnacle Architecture Incorporated for Design Service for Health Centers Behavioral Health Clinics. Total value is $408,650 for 16 months. Funding is through board-approved County American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funds. No county general funds are involved. Madam Vice Chair, that concludes the list.
My goodness, yeah, a hand for that. Merry Christmas, by golly, the Tony here. You're amazing. In any case, does any Commissioner want to remove any items?
I wasn't going to ask him to repeat that, but.
Oh, God, don't you dare. The Vice Chair says no. No way. Don't do that to the poor man.
Say, like, what was that again? What did you say?
I'm not sure I caught that all.
I didn't catch that. What are you talking about?
I feel like we're turning into a bad newscast. You ever see the newscaster?
Yes.
Kind of like do all the banner. Okay, Gary, okay, and Gary's looking at me, which means I have to focus. Focus, okay. So this is where we are. Does any Commissioner wish to remove any items? If not, can I have a motion?
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Shaw and seconded by Commissioner Savas and Commissioner Fisher to approve the consent agenda. No further discussion, as far as I know, so can we call the roll call, please, Tony?
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Vice Chair Schrader.
Aye. The motion is approved. So Gary, what's up next?
Next up is Public Communication. Would you like to read the statement or would you like me?
Yes, I can, I can do that, why not? This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon Revive Statutes and County Code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading them at the business meetings due to time constraints. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first. Is there anyone in the room? Goodness gracious, everybody's out Christmas shopping probably, right? Yeah, holy cow. So I'm not seeing anybody here in the room. Tony, is there anybody online or via Zoom?
If you would like to testify, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received.
Anybody?
Madam Vice Chair, do not have any hands raised.
Okay, so I'm once, twice, three, going to knock the gong here, okay. So I will close the public communication portion of this meeting, and we will move on. Gary, will you please introduce the next item?
Yes, next is County Administrator Update. That's me, I like to share the good work our county staff does, and today I'd like to comment and recognize our Transportation and Development staff, the road crews. They recently, two members of the public commented and thanked our staff for filling potholes, yes, potholes, which is very important to our community, especially if it's on your street or near your house. A member of the public from Estacada wrote, "Thank you so much for filling the potholes on Day Hill Road. Your team got right on it. I appreciate your work tremendously. Thank you for doing a great job." A member of the public from the Redland area wrote in, "The potholes on my street were filled today. I was so surprised to see such a quick response, and I am very grateful. Thank you, way to go." So our staff who did this work are Mike Kohler, David Alberts, and Derek Sanchez, all on the Transportation and Development Team. So thank you for your work, Mike, David, and Derek, and all of our staff and road crews who help our public every day. Next, a note of appreciation about the work of our Dog Services Team. A member of the public wrote, "We love our new family member, Rusty, and he gives us such unconditional love back. We can't believe our luck in getting him. He is helping to heal my heart, and I believe we are healing his heart too. Thank you for taking such good care of him for the three weeks he was at the dog shelter." And special thanks to our two intake caretakers, Kim Brown and Lacey Rourke. So yes, Kim and Lacey are members of our Dog Services Team within Transportation and Development, and they and all of our staff at Dog Services care for hundreds of dogs like Rusty every year, and so we thank them for their fine work as well. Commissioners, as you know, the Board of Commissioners is on recess from December 19th through January 2nd, so there will be no board meetings, issues, executive sessions for the next two weeks. Your next board meeting will be Thursday, January 5, 2023. My final comments today are to you, Commissioner Fisher. Of course, this is your last business meeting as a Commissioner. We had an event for you earlier this week, but I want to say again for the record, it's been such an honor to serve with you here as Clackamas County. Thank you for your incredible compassion, your caring, your commitment to the public of Clackamas County, to our employees, and to all whom have been benefited by your service. You were on the board that hired me, and I thank you for your personal support you've given to me as your administrator, and I've done my best to serve you and all Commissioners, and you'll just be missed. So thank you, Commissioner Fisher, for all of your work to Clackamas County. That is my report today. Vice Chair Schrader.
All right, thank you, and I think we all share your sentiments about Commissioner Fisher, but we'll probably get into that at the end, I think, because now we are up for Commissioner Communication, and Commissioner Savas, you're up.
It looks like Commissioner Fisher's up first.
No, I got, they changed it.
Oh, okay.
I do what I'm told.
Okay. Just want to make sure what happened last week didn't happen again.
Tony came up here and said, no, you've got to go first.
I get to go first, huh?
Yeah, you've got to go first, okay.
Well, I just want to, first of all, I just, we're on the theme here, I just want to acknowledge, as I did a couple days ago, Commissioner Fisher's service to the commission. You know, in this, in this line of work, it takes a lot of fortitude, just even run, to run for office and to serve, and the time and dedication it takes, and we are sometimes often reminded, whether we realize or not, that we serve with humility, and there are tough times with that, and I think it's that awakening that, you know, we do the best we can, we're not perfect, and we're held accountable all the time. People come up here and they're, they're critical, maybe of a decision we're making, whether they understand it fully or, or not, is not really relevant. It just, it's painful sometimes to take, take the heat, but that's, that's, that's what we sign up for, so. But I do want to acknowledge that, you know, when we go out and we're making a decision, and sometimes we're perhaps not in agreement, it also takes fortitude to not be part of the flow. You know, you might be the one person or one of two people that voted against something on a 4-1 or 3-2 vote, and that takes, that takes a lot of courage at times, and, you know, we have to be able to articulate our rationale as to why we take the decisions we do, and I, you know, I'm used to that, I've been doing that for 12 years, and I've been out on that limb by myself, and, but I do want to say that there were times where Commissioner Fisher and I, you know, we were both on the limb at the same time on particular issues, so, you know, it's, it's something that I appreciate, and I, frankly, I admire that, you know, the, again, the fortitude to take a stand and to, you know, to explain that, as well as this entire job, it takes a lot of courage. So I appreciate working with Commissioner Fisher. We can connect on certain things and certain, I call it a language, actually, there's, there's language barriers and the technicalities of all these different levels of government service, and I was, we were approving the ASME contracts, I was thinking about that again, and I'll speak that a little bit later. But again, I just want to just say, you know, my, my appreciation for all those who serve, and in this case, Commissioner Fisher, for her service. So transitioning on that theme, this morning at our last J-PAC meeting of the year, we had four people who were departing, Metro Counselor Craddock, who served as the J-PAC Chair, and Kathy Hizey, city councilperson from Milwaukee, who is serving on J-PAC as the city's representative, and Jessica Vega Peterson, who is not going to be serving on J-PAC, but is still certainly with the Multnomah County Commissioner as Chair now, and Commissioner Joanne Hardesty, Portland Commissioner who lost her race, who's also served on J-PAC. So we bid farewell to those folks, and always, again, a reminder of the different language we, different languages we speak. And again, it's technical, it's the acronyms, it's, it's the, it's a language, and sometimes we forget on how to break that communication down into ways that those who are not familiar with that language understand it. And so I say that as I transition to my other thing, which is really our, our language barriers, and so I, I grew up in a family that we spoke different languages, and my grandmother spoke 13 different languages, and we had friends and family that also spoke those languages. Always hard for me, I said I didn't really speak them, and I was not allowed to speak them, actually, that's a story for a different day, but I could understand a lot of it, so I understood what the conversations were. And later on in life, when I worked at an aerospace shop, I started out on the ground floor, and I was a machinist, and we were, it was a very unique shop, it was not, it was a very unique shop, we were working on the spatial program, and there were very, there were people that were highly, highly intelligent. It was a shop that where if, if it couldn't be built, it went to, went to the place where we were, and we were the problem solvers, and I was surrounded by geniuses, frankly, eccentric geniuses that all spoke a different language, and it was all English, mind you, it's all English, but it's technical, and I was realizing that a lot of the conflicts we had sometimes were the ability to translate from. from this person's language and acronyms or understanding or how they spoke and how that translated into things. And I've learned that through life, that we all speak different languages, even though we're might speaking English, but whether we get so technical or wrapped up in the verbiage or the level of understanding or not sometimes, and how to convey and distill that down for our public or to each other to argue or to advocate or to rationalize what we do. So I am not an attorney by any stretch of the imagination, but I certainly also appreciate that skill set, and there are terms and languages in which, you know, we have to appreciate. And in government, we have a lot of acronyms as well. So I just want to just say for the public out over there, when you hear us speak or hear us talk, whether it's transportation, sometimes we get a little wonky, and that wonkiness is really expressed in those acronyms or the terminology. And I know that I am guilty, I take responsibility, and Commissioner Fisher has always pointed that out, not always, but pointed that out. And I understand she doesn't in a respectful way, as other commissioners have pointed out. But I do get technical, and I appreciate you trying to keep me, if you don't understand what I'm saying and ask for that clarification, I got to remember, I got to distill that down into language that, again, explains those acronyms or the wonkiness of the work we do. Transportation is extremely wonky, and this morning, when we were appreciating everyone for what they were doing at the J-PAC meeting, I think it's with mutual respect and love and appreciation for the wonkiness that our work brings us to. So with that said, I wish everyone a great holiday season, a happy new year, and we'll see y'all next year.
We will. Commissioner Schull, you're up.
Yes, thank you, and good morning, Clackamas County. I can't believe it's only 10:53. This is the last opportunity I'll have this year to address the people of Clackamas County. I have just two points to make this morning. One is on tolling. I'd like to give you a perspective. The Orange Line MAX train cost $1.49 billion and some change. $750 million of that came from the federal government, the remainder paid by the people of Oregon through various taxes. The Orange Line is 7.7 miles long. It carries passengers from southwest Portland to Milwaukee. The Orange Line was shut down this year for 30 days for repairs. The Abernathy Bridge improvement cost is about $500 million. The widening of I-205 is another $250 million for a total of $750 million, half the price of the Orange Line. I-205 carries over 100,000 vehicles a day over a seven-mile stretch between Stafford Road and Highway 213, which is a segment that will be widened. One big difference between the Orange Line and I-205 improvement is that I-205 is a major commerce route for the West Coast, heavy freight, and the main north-south traffic for the West Coast of the United States. If a vehicle goes between San Diego and Seattle, it will most likely cross I-205. I-205 cannot be shut down for 30 days, not even for one day. Commerce would suffer. That is the difference in importance between I-205 and a MAX line. Yet ODOT and the Oregon Transportation Commission is asking Oregonians and every user from across the nation who drives through our area on I-205 to pay a toll for a critical project that is half the price of a local service, Orange Line MAX train. Think about that. Then contact your state senator and your state rep and take a look at votebefortolls.org, sign the petition to put that issue before the voters in 2024. Your voice will make a difference. I think you and I are being taxed enough. Let ODOT and the state budget readjust their expenses before they help themselves to the contents of your wallet and your business's bottom line. Next item I want to talk to you about is on needed change in Oregon to provide for a healthy and prosperous future. As we draw near to the end of 2022, there are three things that I would like to see changed or improved in 2023. One, and the most important, is improvements in our K-12 public school system. Oregon is struggling in this area, and we owe our children the best education we can deliver to them. We can no longer stay toward the bottom of the 50 states on education. Although the Board of Commissioners do not have direct decision-making on public schools, I am distressed on where education is in Oregon. I implore every parent to become very vocal in 2023. We are our children's only voice. Two, taxation and the cost of living in Oregon and Clackamas County. It is too expensive for many people to stay in Oregon, and the high rate of taxation for families and businesses is keeping new businesses from locating here and providing the jobs we need. Again, every resident of the county must sound off, work through your newly-elected state representative, and make a change towards greater affordability in Oregon. Reduce government, not families. Three, land use reform. Restrictive land use laws implemented mostly in the 1970s are now limiting this county's ability to open new industrial lands and new residential lands as well. The high costs of land resulting from these land use laws are partly responsible for the high cost of housing. Again, the voice of every resident of the county speaking out and demanding change by working through your elected representatives is the only way we can budge the current system. As we look at the new year in 2023, I want to remind the citizens of the county who have not yet become involved in participating in government that you and your neighbors are, in fact, the most powerful political force there is when you become active, engaged, and challenge the status quo. We need you. I'd like to thank Commissioner Fisher for the service to the people of Clackamas County and wish you and your husband Kirk a wonderful Christmas, a great new year, and please, when you're on the beach in Hawaii or Mexico or Tahiti or wherever it's going to be you're going to go, please send us a picture so we can wish we were there with you. And to all the employees of Clackamas County, I want to thank you for your efforts in 2022 and what you've done to make this county a great place to live and work. And to all the people of Clackamas County, I wish you all a very Merry Christmas, a prosperous new year, a year full of growth, positive change, and success for you, your family, your business, and for the county. Thank you for your time.
Commissioner Fisher, you're up.
Thank you. Commissioner Schull, I have a little joke for you. Do you remember when you got that new kitten?
Uh, yeah.
And I said, "Send me a picture of that new kitten." I have yet to have you text me a picture of that kitten.
Today, because it's a big cat now.
Okay. I don't know that I'll be doing many trips to Tahiti or Mexico, but I do have a son that lives in Oahu, and I do try to visit him when the airline tickets aren't too cost prohibitive. So I'm going to keep that in mind, so I can, I'll send it to all of you and just let you know how beautiful it is on the other side. Thank you, everyone. It's really nice. I want to piggyback on what Dylan Blaylock's PGA video was just awesome. Didn't we all just feel really good about that? The, you know, when you look at all of those things, you think about the different places where we all played a role or a part, or we advocated, or we were just a little bit more involved, and we have memories and stories and impacts that we know that we made in working in partnership with members from the community and members from our staff. And it's just wonderful. It's really nice to see all of the incredible work that county government can do. Over the years, there's been a few other little things I just wanted to highlight that have been really impactful for me. When I first came on the commission, we were in the Stafford-Hamlet urban-rural reserve conflict, and it was my first public meeting, was walking into Stafford Elementary, and I, oh gosh, it was just so much angst and so much turmoil. And not only that, but our PowerPoint for the county didn't work, and the staffer tried to fix that, and it was just like, oh my gosh. And I just remember just working sort of the back of the room, and I went to our county administrator and said, "What about an intergovernmental agreement or memorandum of understanding?" It's like, wouldn't that work? And he goes, "Oh, yeah, I think that would work." And going over to Stephen Madcor and saying, "Stephen, well, what about an intergovernmental agreement memorandum of understanding? Can't we just solve this with that?" And he's like, "Oh, I think that, yeah, 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 that can work." And I walk out of the meeting, and Teresa Kohlhoff, who was just elected Lake Oswego city councillor, says, "Sonya, I just think we need to crack this nut. We need to crack this nut with an intergovernmental agreement and a memorandum of understanding." And I'm like, "Oh, Teresa Kohlhoff, that is a great idea. I think you should get with Councillor Goodman and just make that happen." And it did, it happened. We got that very contentious issue resolved with much more work and background than my little impact there. But it just goes to show that we all play such significant roles in issues that really affect people's lives. And along with that, all the issues in that area and the tremendous transportation challenges because of the Abernathy Bridge and I-205, and just working so diligently with Public Affairs and making sure that that was just on the agenda for every session. And I tell you, Chris Lyons, Trent, man, they and Sue Hildig, they live boulders of opposition, and they carry that heavy load for us and tap the commissioners in when needed to push things forward, and that is happening. I mean, I tell you, right now, it's a mess over there. When I come here to the county and I go and I drive through 43, and I can see all the cranes and all the work and all of it, it's a beautiful mess. It's a beautiful mess of progress that we all can be very, very proud of. I just can't let this moment pass without just recognizing the tremendous camaraderie we have all had on affordable housing. We had a goal of 812 units. We've more than doubled that goal through our public-private partnerships and ingenuity and staff work, incredible success with our metro housing dollars. And can't let this moment go by without, I mean, you think about when we started, I mean, I remember that the word "affordable housing" was a little bit stigmatized. "Oh, you didn't want to say that because, oh, that's like a project, and that's all just for those people." It was just kind of stigmatized, and you just had to be careful with the words you used. It's like now, six years later, it's like, yes, we need workforce housing, we need housing where the people can afford, and we need to build it, and we need to create a continuum, we need more supply, we need, everybody's on board, not a partisan issue. We are so far ahead and so appreciate this board's commitment from the very beginning of when I stepped into it to really focus on housing, because now we're really sitting at a place where we can move the dial on solving homelessness to make it rare, brief, and non-recurring. I have so appreciated. So last night, I was at my last tri-county planning meeting through Metro, and it is, it's just at the place, I know Chair Smith started off with it when they were doing a lot of the onboarding and the relationship building and all that, but I got to step in when they're doing the system brainstorming. And last night, it was just awesome, because I could talk about the priorities of the points of entry into the system and how as a region, when somebody's at the hospital or they're in an emergency room, how can we streamline it so that we can get people to the services they need so they're not discharged from emergency room with health issues to the street? We've got to fix that. And also with, I mean, all the privacy laws and the barriers, we've got to figure out a way to get people the help that they need. So that's a really awesome opportunity that this group will be looking at. And you will be hearing more about it. It's still pretty new, but the state has a new waiver that is tying housing insecurity and the social determinants of health in our coordinated, through our coordinated care organizations. And Mr. Schroeder, who's the head of our Health Share of Oregon, has now, he's just amazing. He was on this tri-county planning body until now. He's been promoted to the Oregon Health Authority Director that is with Tina Kotek, has named him. James Schroeder is incredible thinker. We are really well-poised to really integrate and to build a system that is super exciting. And it's been, thank you, colleagues, for allowing me the opportunity. I would thank Chair Smith, but Chair Smith, if you see this later or someone tell her. Really appreciate the connection and the camaraderie in giving me a place at those very significant tables to move that work forward. It's been such an honor. I want to really thank Gary with this board, well, not all of us, but us here on the previous board in 2020, after the death of George Floyd, and leaning in and leaning in with our leaders of equity, diversity, and inclusion, getting input, advice, drafting, and passing a resolution, which had us review, and I'm looking at Stephen Madcor, because it was your office that did it, our county code and looking for areas of bias and ways, things that we needed to change within the structures of our governance. And we've created, Gary created the Equity Office with the blessing of this board, and we have, we're much more leaned in, we're much more connected with our staff in Clackamas County, and not only internally but also externally, we have great leaders that are moving this work forward with the Coalition of Communities of Color. And it is truly being integrated throughout our systems and our structures of how do we view things, where are there disparities, how do we create fairness, where do we rid out discrimination, how do we do that, how do we honor the uniqueness of every individual into a community that supports everyone? And that's pretty awesome, Gary. Hats off to you because you really pushed for, to really create an office for equity, diversity, and inclusion, and the amazing groundwork that Emmett Wheatfall did for years and years leading up to that, so very appreciated. So we were all part of those great successes. I also have to say, working in collaboration with the sheriff, and this board referred to the voters, the public safety levy, which resulted in more patrols through our sheriff's office and also really important body cameras, which increase our ability to have accountability in our public safety systems. And that's a really pretty big deal, really pretty big deal. So really happy about that. And then, of course, this board, I won't be here, I'm really sad that I won't be here to do the climate action plan work, but I just had lunch with Eben and with Cheryl Bell, and there are so many points of consensus that this board can move forward when it comes to climate action. And I really am hopeful that that, all the work of the community engagement and putting things together will move forward in a way that is very Clackamas-centric and will help us move the dial, and that is work that will be for all of you lying ahead. And so, some little things, little things, I know this is my last chance, I can just talk all day, you guys don't have to sit here and listen to me. But I think, you know, on our little thing here, which is our goals, we have a pretty important one about our public safety systems. The group that's working on this has been looking at creating a public safety district. That was an idea that the Peace Officers Association was in favor of when Craig Roberts, it was studied way back in the day, I don't even remember how many years ago, Stephen Madcor probably knows, but it didn't move forward at that time under Craig Roberts. Sheriff Brandenburg was supportive of it. That is something, when you're looking at the public safety system and funding it, that might, because there's all these little pieces, there's the public safety, and then there's this law enforcement district, and then there's the general fund, and then there's this, and it's just all a hodgepodge. But what if there was a public safety district, if it's feasible? That's something that's on this to be looked at, public safety funding. I really encourage this board to lean in on that and look, really ask what the group talked about and what is feasible, because that is, are things that are important for this county as it grows and it moves ahead. Of course, we all know that I'm a lawyer and that I have spent many days at the Clackamas County courthouse, not so much as a Clackamas County Commissioner, but definitely before, a little bit during, and now I will be going back and doing more law practice. And oh my gosh, to have a new courthouse that will, actually, we're breaking ground next month. How long is it going to take, Gary? Is it like a year and a half of building it? How long? When will it be done? When will it be done? 2020, May of 2025?
Spring 2025.
Spring 2025? Okay, so I'm going to be here for the groundbreaking, and then I really want to be here for the ribbon cutting, can somebody remember that? I mean, I don't have to be in the picture, because I'm not going to be an elected official, but if I could just be in the background going, yay! I am so proud of that. I don't know how to communicate how difficult it is to be sitting with a victim of domestic violence in a family abuse restraining order, and have no way to create separation because of the space constraints in the courthouse between the victim and the perpetrator. In our new courthouse, all of that is going to go away, and we are going to be able to minister justice and have create accountability in a way that is just simply not possible in the current courthouse. And I'm really, really pleased that this board has moved forward with with the courthouse. So, there we go. I feel gratitude. I know I'm a little sad, and I can get a little teary, but these positions belong to the people. We just get the honor and privilege of stepping in just for a moment, just a moment in time. We have the board of all the county commissioners, you look at all those great leaders that have served. I had the incredible opportunity, Michael Jordan, who now works for the city of Portland, lives in Camby, was a county commissioner, he's there on that board. And I sat with him at the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Conference that we had, and just learned a bit about his time in service here. And do you know what he's doing now? He is going to be leading the effort of implementing the whole new structure in the city of Portland with their new charter. It's like, wow, and for a moment of time, he was here for those four years creating change. There's been some really wonderful, I think of Jamie Damon, who was here, who did some great work, and Charlotte Lehan, and John Ludlow, and Bob Austin, do we remember Bob Austin? Just, I met him when I was seeking an appointment for the first time to this board in 2008, wonderful, bright light, of Judy Hammerstad, Darlene Houli, I mean, just wonderful, Ed Lindquist, I could go on and on with the great leaders. Ralph Groner, bless his heart, county commissioner. Wonderful people, wonderful history. It is but an honor to pass through and be here for just a moment in time to have this impact. So, I remember when I met with Terrence Arneo, former executive of VIGOR, when I was first running for office, and he supported my campaign and said, do something good. I think I fulfilled that as an individual commissioner, I think this board has fulfilled fulfills that every day, and I encourage you all to keep that little voice going on. The people at the other end of every decision are what we're here for. It's not left, it's not right, but it's forward, and let's just do something that's good for the people.
Great. Well, thank you. Yeah, we do a lot, don't we? And every time I look at that board over there, I think of, wow, look at everybody that came before us here, and how privileged we are to be here in these seats, because because people, it's really all about trust, and people hopefully continue to trust us and trust all of my colleagues. And thank you, Commissioner Fisher, for all the good work that you've done. And thank you, colleagues, for what was a rough and tumble few years, but we got through it, and it's probably not going to change, it's always a little rough and tumble in in this county, but but all of us who have served love the job, and we love our constituents, and we love the people. So I'm just going to close with something that I've been thinking about saying, because I love Advent, I love Christmas, it's a real time of anticipation, and when you turn to thinking about the poorest of the poor, and always makes me think that all religious traditions share the same values, and more than likely, I mean, I I know that in my heart, and that it's a good thing for us to take this time during Advent, not only to anticipate things, but also to reflect. And I wanted to share with you folks one thing that I've always loved, and it's from 20, it's from, no, 1513, okay? Go back, go back to the 14th century. And there was a priest named Fra Giovanni, and he wrote a letter, and maybe today we'd consider it kind of a Christmas card kind of thing, but it also is a prayer, and, you know, prayers contain power. They can move people, they can move us together, I've always felt, in community, and they can remind us that one of our roles as Commissioner Fisher and all my colleagues have pointed out is really caring about the vulnerable, the most poor, the hungry, you know, think of the beatitudes and how we should be behaving towards one another. But in any case, this this prayer, to me, has always really kind of brought brought me a lot of peace and a lot of anticipation, and very beautiful. So I would like to end with this. Fra Giovanni's Christmas prayer. "I salute you. There is nothing I can give you which you have not, but there is much that, while I cannot give, you can take. No heaven can come to us unless our hearts find rest in it today. Take heaven. No peace lies in the future which is not hidden in the present moment. Take peace. The gloom of the world is but a shadow, behind it yet within our reach is joy. Take joy. And so, at this Christmas time, I greet you with the prayer that for you, now and forever, the day breaks and the shadows flee away." So I hope that we all find meaning in that against, you know, again, in the context of all of our religious traditions. So let joy keep you this Christmas season, please be happy, be warm, and let's not, let's not forget that a big piece of our job is protecting the dignity and respect of all the people in Clackamas County. So happy holidays and Merry Christmas, ladies and gentlemen. We are adjourned.